Good evening. It is 7:04 PM and I hereby call to order the November 2015 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board Trustees. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I would also like to ask the room to please observe a moment of silence in memory of the victims of the terrorist attacks in Paris last Friday, the 13th. We will begin with the Village Clerk's Report. Clerk Gennella, please.
The Clerk's Office sold 639 trash bags. We attended a planning board meeting and a workshop and two ZBA meetings. There were three payrolls processed. We are compiling water sewer bills, which we mailed on December 1st. And we have holidays coming up, Thursday and Friday, November 26th and 27th, in observance of Thanksgiving.
Close next Thursday and next Friday?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes from previous meetings. You have in your binders Executive Session Board Meeting Minutes from October 21st and Regular Board Meeting Minutes from October 21st. You've all had a chance to review them. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion made by Trustee Majors, are second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you as always Clerk Gennella for doing such good minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Treasurers' Report, please.
In the general fund, we spent $23,826.22. In the water fund, it was $28,859.68. In the sewer fund, it was $14,209.26. The expendable trust was $393.26 for a total of $67,289.12.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report?
So moved.
The motion was made by Trustee Schneider, are second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Major, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's Report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I move.
Trustee Majors, there are second?
So moved.
Trustee Schneider, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pay the bills. Moving on to a zoning report. Trustee Ezraidi, please.
There don't appear to be any summaries on this report, but the zoning officer appears to have been very busy. There are, looks like, 20 to 25 property rental agent registrations.
Yeah, we've made quite a push to get compliance with the...
Maybe more like 30 or 40.
Landlord agent.
Which is a good thing, because we can contact them in the Water and Brakes, whatever. Do we have it? We also had certificate of completion concluded in the past. Doesn't say what it was for. And the approval of a footing for the Lutze property at 84...
I think it's 15 Charlotte.
It's 15 Charlotte, I'm sorry. And the removal of an existing fireplace and the installation of a standby generator on Friendship Street. And I guess the certificate of completion is for the replacement of a new Woodbridge stove.
Thank you, Trustee Ezraidi, for the zoning report. Clerk Gennella, do we have any correspondence this month?
No.
Thank you. Before I ask for public comment on agenda items, I want to let you all know that we are tabling items 1 and 6. And I'll quickly go through what's left, so your comments can perhaps be more useful to you and us. Designation of CT Mail, that's an engineering firm out of Red Hook, as a backup engineer for the Village of Tivoli. As you recall, last month, we brought back Crawford and Associates as our designated Village Engineer. Municipalities ought to have a backup for times when there's a conflict of interest, et cetera. So we would, having completed that process of the RFP and 13 proposals, and we spoke with 13 firms, interviewed four, CT Mail is basically our number two, and we'd like them to be the backup. There's a number of proposed budget modifications, having to do with street painting donations and making both sides of the ledger balanced, because we had more donations than anticipated, right? There are also budget modifications about salaries. So when we did the budget, we didn't yet know the outcome of the union contract negotiations. So we were able to anticipate what we thought they would come out at, and put some extra money in our contingency line, so that when the actual contract was finished and we knew the actual contract raises, we would have the money, and we did. And there is also a budget modification about how the retirement is calculated. Sorry Clerk Gennella, if you could help me, the firm, is that the word?
The retirement system.
The retirement system. So they used to calculate it on projected salaries, now they're doing it on actual salaries, which created a approximately $3,000 deficit, which we need to account for, so. Number four is to approve a water sewer service for a new single-family home at 15 Charlotte Lane. And tonight, we're going to approve that document on the condition of the planning board approval, which is still outstanding. And resolution adopting New York State Unified Solar Permit. The state has a permit that they're hoping many municipalities around the state will adopt. Basically, if a homeowner wants to put on a photovoltaic on their roof or something, it's a standardized form that would be the same across the state. And just an opportunity to expedite things for the homeowner and to encourage solar power. And return of the tax roll to Duchess County. I think that's pretty self-evident. Any public comment on agenda items? Mr. Monti?
Well, uncharacteristic, I didn't actually have it to say tonight. But then, the LED thing, which of course is tabled, so it's not really an issue, but it's something that I have thought a lot about for both selfish and non-selfish reasons.
Let me interrupt for a second and tell the folks out there what we are tabled, because they don't know.
Oh, yeah.
If you weren't... Approved participation in Central Hudson LED Streetlight Maintenance Program, which was a program whereby when a conventional streetlight fails and needs to be replaced, they would replace it with an LED. Okay.
Whenever we get around to actually getting involved in that, I think it's really important to be able to, if nothing else, at least be able to have a conversation with Central Hudson about both the color temperature of the lights in question, as well as the options for shading, the overspill, for variety of reasons. I mean, I don't like having sodium vapor streetlights blasting into my house in the middle of the night. That's just me, some people may do like that. So I think it's important to be able to have some, at least, ability to address that with them, the color issue.
It's actually one of the reasons we're tabling it for tonight.
Exactly, to give them... One question that came to mind when I was hearing about it is that the concept is to replace failing fixtures with LEDs as fixtures fail? Is that how it works?
Yeah. So if they get to a point where they have to replace the fixture, they will change the technology.
The only concern that I would have about that, which is actually pretty minimal and maybe only an aesthetic concern, is that that would happen over a period of time. The technology is changing so rapidly, it occurs to me that fixtures themselves are actually going to be changing quite rapidly as well. So there's a possibility, and I don't even know if it's important, but that the lights themselves might be sort of a hodgepodge of quality going up and down the street, instead of being sort of consistent. One of the things that I liked about the idea of replacing them was I envisioned in my head to be able to just, you know, snap our fingers and have them all switched over to LED, and it would be a nice sort of consistent look down the street.
I think there was...
Which it isn't now, so...
Right. Well, there's some other efforts going on alongside of this, you know, for municipalities to possibly do more of what you're talking about, like change everything it wants to LEDs. I mean, that's not this particular program. It seemed like a chance to get a few LEDs in and save a few bucks, because they are, they do have a lower rate schedule than the conventional lights, by about 15 bucks a light or something.
I might just encourage you guys to look at the issues of shading and color. That's the main thing.
Good point.
Thank you.
And you don't want it to be...
Well, blue is just some nauseous color. So, yeah, we'll leave it at that. We'll avoid color bias.
It's going to be in the minutes, though, Pete, the blue people. Any other public comments on regular business items? Okay, seeing none, we will get to regular business. First up, designation of CT Mail as backup engineering firm for the Village of Tivoli. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Mayor, I believe you have a resolution, you may be our solution, correct?
Yes. Would you like me to read it?
Please.
There's some kind of question. Whereas the Village of Tivoli issued a request for proposals for engineering services for the village, and after review of the proposals received, the Village Board has determined to enter into an agreement for professional engineering services between CT Mail Associates, serving architecture and land architecture, and the Village of Tivoli for engineering services to the extent requested and running by the village, where the village's designated engineer is determined to have a conflict or otherwise, or is otherwise unavailable, as determined by the mayor, and then it's therefore resolved that we do it.
It's appropriate you read that, since you sat with us on the selection process. So we had our motion made by the Deputy Mayor and seconded already by, let's see, Trustee Schneider. Any discussion?
What number actually?
We have a resolution, number nine, Clerk?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
And there's a roll call.
And there's a roll call. Deputy Mayor Bruno?
Aye.
Trustee Ezraidi?
Aye.
Trustee Major?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. We'd like to welcome CT Mail.
Okay, there's a second, there's a resolution, is that...
But that's not related to CT Mail, right? Okay. The proposed budget modifications, we spoke about these last week, I think the Board has a pretty good grasp on it at this time. Is there a motion to approve the proposed budget mods?
I move.
Motion was made by Trustee Majors, are second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the budget modifications are adopted. Approval of a water sewer service for a new single-family home at 15 Charlotte Lane. And again, I want to be clear, in the minutes, that this is on the condition that the planning board concludes their assessment. So the ZBA had a meeting last night, their evaluation is complete, but the planning board does not, so we'll get this document ready at this time, but it will not, the hookup itself will not happen until the planning board has concluded. At this time, is there a motion to approve the water sewer service?
So moved.
Motion's made by the Deputy Mayors, are second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Major, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to Resolution 32, the Unified Solar Permit.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Yeah, we just did thirty-two.
Oh, I thought that was thirty-one.
It was thirty-one.
So we said CT Mail was thirty-one?
Right, and the budget modification was thirty-two.
Very good, thank you. That's why you're the clerk.
And the church.
And the church. And the gaming officer, and much, much more.
But you get to marry people.
Okay, Resolution 33. Resolution to adopt New York State Unified Solar Permit. Whereas the Village of Tivoli is a New York State Climate Smart Community, you may remember we adopted the Climate Smart Communities pledge some time ago. Whereas the New York State Unified Solar Permit is a standardized permit for use by all New York municipalities that simplifies and streamlines the permitting of small-scale photovoltaic systems and increases consistency and transparency in permitting. Is there a motion to adopt the New York State Unified Solar Permit?
So moved.
Motion was made by Trustee Schneider, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ezraidi, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, there's a roll call.
Roll call. Deputy Mayor Bruno?
Aye.
Trustee Major?
Aye.
Trustee Ezraidi?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
I also vote aye. And the permit is adopted. And return of the tax roll to Duchess County. In your role as Treasurer, Clerk Gennella, would you...
Actually, as Tax Collector.
As Tax Collector, right. Title number.
How many hats did she have to bring today?
A lot. Do you have any comments on what this is exactly for the...
This is what, Mrs. Little, order been normal, there are 20 properties totaling $17,942.22.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to return the tax roll to Duchess County?
I move.
That's by Trustee Majors, are second?
Second.
That's by Trustee Schneider, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that concludes our regular business for this month. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, December 16th, at 7:00 PM, with a workshop proceeding at 6:00 PM. Here at the historic Lots de Peister Hall. And our December regular workshop will be on Wednesday, December 9th, at 7:00 PM. Moving on to committee reports. Deputy Mayor Bruno, please.
Okay, well, since the last meeting was in October, and it was just prior to Halloween, the facilities were closed for the season in the park. We had our Halloween party and costume parade and Broadway trick-or-treating went very well. And your children appeared to have a great time at the library event. It was really fantastic. Our thanks to Migliorelli's for donating apple cider, and also to Adams Ferryker Farms, who had donated over four dozen of their apple cider donuts. Thanks to Little Pickles in Red Hook, adorable little name. Oblon Books and Tivoli Library for donating the prizes for the costume contest. Hands down, favorite costume, Mary Poppins. She was adorable, hat, bag. It was incredible. And thanks too to the businesses on Broadway, who all participated as well as the kids had, they went trick-or-treating on Broadway and the other businesses gave out candy. So it was very sweet. So after Halloween, we went right into November, and November 11th, we celebrated Veterans' Day. My privilege to be there on the 11th at 11:00 on Monument Hill, spend some time with our veterans, and also to hear our mayor speak and address the public along with the veterans. And upcoming, we've got Winter Fest, December 12th, 2:30 to 4:30, right over here at the Firehouse. There'll be a craft fair from 12 to 4:00. And then, prior to that too, the library is going to be hosting the Author Meet and Greet, which you may have more details on that, right?
You're pretty much stealing my thunder.
Sorry.
Kaboom.
But as we have in the past, craft fair, we're still looking for vendors, so if anyone's interested, please by all means, contact me through the Clerk's Office. And we will have arts and crafts, music, caroling, horse and wagon rides, those two big black perruchons will be back, bonfire refreshments will be available, although our tree lighting and a visit from Santa Claus.
You know, I was telling you, an adult recently, that we had the perruchons and the rides, and they said, "No, you don't, no way you do that." I said, "We do that every year." So I hope they come and...
Yes.
See it.
Yeah. Yeah, Mike and Duke.
Yeah.
Those are the horses' names.
Okay.
Don't they have Dancer and Prancer?
Maybe people switch it this year, just for you, Susan. Tom Hanson, who have a farm from up north. Gotcha. Have you seen him before? Incredible. You got to make it.
You got everything?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you Deputy Mayor Bruno. Trustee Ezraidi, please.
Just to follow on, and I'm sorry I wasn't here in October to talk about this, but I have just concluded the application for the Artsmith Hudson Grant for Street Band for 2016. We just get, finish one and start another. But it was fun writing the application, as well as the final report for that, because despite yours truly being very reluctant to change the date to a date when it would not be 40 degrees and raining, we managed to have 222 registered artists, probably 400 people. It was a little quieter in the middle than it is some years, but the art was outstanding. We had participation from the library this year, the library board, they did a lot of work on our press releases, and as a result, we had the River Chronicle and the Daily Freeman here. We've got a three-page spread in the River Chronicle and a front page of the weekend edition in the Daily Freeman. So adding some new people was a great idea. We also had assistance at registration, and what amazes me every year is that we have to lay out 131 squares very accurately, so people will know where they are. And I never know if anyone is going to show up to help with that, and every year, I have like 15 volunteers. This year, the really fun part was we had a guy call to me once a day for about three weeks to ask if he could have a white square, because he had a very good artist who was going to do a portrait of Bernie Sanders, and he needed a white square for the background. Finally, I said to him, "You want a white square? Arrive at 7:30, you'll help to paint all the squares, and we'll give you a big white paper yours." And he was here! That part of it is really astonishing. I spoke to Bonnie Carrato, and told her that, you know, I was getting a little afraid over this, and she said, "I know, it's Tivoli." She said, "Whenever we do anything, we send out the requests, we tell them to sign up, give us an ask, we get three responses, and 50 people show up." So I'm glad she got it. But anyway, it was wonderful, and the application is in, so keep your fingers crossed for that. The Water and Sewer Report shows that our McNicholwell was pumping at about 10,000 gallons a day. The 2PW was pumping for about half of the month at 11,000 a day. The 5PW was really only on a couple of the days that the 2PW was not on. The 4PE and 10PE wells pumped an average of 20,000 gallons a day, and the Woodmark Wells, which are our biggest producers, producer was pumping about almost 30 gallons a day. For a total of... And our water tower was at full height between 165 and 170 feet, which is probably a result of good rainfall. I wasn't here to give the October report, but I was astonished to know that in October, we had almost 12 inches of rain in Tivoli, and in November, we had four inches. So even though we've had a lot of dry sunny days, we've actually had a whole component of rain. We did have two water main bricks, is that correct? One was on Woods Road, and one was on Farrow, 100 feet from Montgomery Street. And it looks like there was a leak in the service line in the development. But that's actually relative to recently, that's not bad, right? Because we've been having 45 breaks a month. And the water quality report came in as normal.
Thank you.
One more thing. The zoning and planning departments should be getting gold stars. They have been working very hard. We had an applicant who required that they, or asked that these two boards expedite the review of his property. Both boards worked diligently and very sought out appropriate support from Michelle Gregg, our planner, as well as from Victoria Polidero, our land use attorney. And it looks like that expediting is working. We had a ZBA meeting on Wednesday, or on Monday, four days ago, and we had a dozen people there, so the notifications went out, and the interested parties were there and able to give their comments to the board. And the board did approve three size variances and one setback variant at that minute.
Thank you, Trustee Ezraidi. Trustee Schneider, please.
Okay, I'm going to start with our Village Court Charge Volume Summary Report for the month of October. The total charges received for the month were 10. There were 14 charges disposed. A total of $1,209 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller. From there, I wanted to just talk for a brief moment about the Greenway Grant and the continuation of that project. Trustee Major and I met earlier this month to review the plans, all the progress that's been made to date. I think that Trustee Major will be instrumental in helping us to identify individuals who should serve on a voluntary committee. I know I spoke about it at a previous board meeting, the desire to form a voluntary committee of professionals who can help guide the next part of the project, which is a selection of concepts, materials, and accessories, such as lighting benches for our walkway down to the waterfront. Really, the goal is to create a unique access or walkway to the waterfront that reflects the originality and character of our village. So I think that local participation is going to be one of those really important elements in helping shape that to be ours, reflective of the Village of Tivoli. Committee, anybody who's interested in participating on the committee should feel free to reach out to me. You can get me at my email, which is gnand@schneider@gmail.com. You can also reach out to Trustee Major. There's no set schedule for committee meetings. As I said, we are still in the process of trying to charm lots of qualified individuals into serving in their professional capacities. That's also important for helping us to realize our goal of the matching grants that are required for the completion of this project. It's also important to acknowledge and thank Crawford and Associates, because they are taking on the next phase of this project, one that was begun under a previous engineer. So it's a bit of a trick to handle that in the transition, so it's been amazing so far. So thank you. I also wanted to thank the mayor for his words and our legion for the ceremonies at Memorial Hill on Veterans' Day. And I also wanted to say a thank you. I noticed that the local Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts from both Rhinebeck and Red Hook Troop 3042 were present, so I wanted to say thank you to the leaders who helped organize and get our scouts there to attend, and for just teaching our scouts to honor our veterans. I think it's really important. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Major, please.
At the library this month, let's see, next Tuesday from 10:00 to 11:30, oops, sorry, 10:30 to 11:30, preschool storytime with Ms. Penny. And December 12th, from 1:00 to 2:30, there'll be a meet and greet with local authors and a book signing. And Bettina Mueller, Tivoli resident, won an award for her tea garden and also put together a beautiful coffee table book. She will be there signing, as will Trish Keegan. And stick around afterwards for Winter Fest. Bettina is a whole while. National, but yeah, it's amazing.
It's good. The UK too.
Come and hear, see the book, buy the book.
It's a handsome book.
It is. And Sunday, December 8th, from 1:00 to 4:00, is Dutch Christmas Open House at the Elmendorf in Red Hook, which is a cookie extravaganza. And there's music and festive things. Your season officially opens on Saturday, so be aware, wear your orange, and stay out of the woods. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Major. Let's see, the Green Committee led by Mara Ranville has been incredibly active on the morning of Halloween, December 31st, with the help of 15 volunteers, one was here. We went up to Memorial Hill along Broadway, the front of the McKnight Well Field, and the 15 volunteers planted 1,200 daffodil bulbs. And a smaller group came down here, planted some allium and hyacinth in Susan's Way and around the gazebo area. It was a fun day. Our village attorney was there as well. And, you know, we all just have to wait till spring and see, see them come up. But that was a lot of fun. And again, actually, Bettina Mueller, our award winner from last year for the Solar Forum, was the one who figured out that the Hudson Valley Gardeners Association in Poughkeepsie offered free bulbs to municipalities, secured these bulbs at no cost to taxpayers. So we acknowledged the right woman last year.
So you had free materials and free labor.
Yeah.
Double bonus. Double bonus.
And somehow we had good weather, too. So that was, that was really fun. And there was a Bard student who volunteered and showed up, and I hope we get some more on the future activities. It was really great to have him there. Not, well, not, the next week, the Green Committee had four trees arrive in the village and we got those planted with some other volunteers, John Corcoran and again Bettina. I want to thank the DPW for coordinating some of the things. The mayor got to drive the big dump truck, that was fun. And so we got, let's see, a genko on Montgomery Street and three purple robe locusts, which have a very unusual purple flower in the springtime. One went by the Masonic Hall, one went in front of Old Murray's Osaka there, and another one on Montgomery Street. So four new trees, which I have to say is something I haven't wanted to do since I was a freshman trustee. So it was amazing to have that happen, thanks to the Greens Committee. And then, yes, on Veterans Day, a really nice ceremony, great weather, and, yeah, the Boy Scouts and the Red Hook Tenderhearts, another group of very young girls who made really, really sweet cards and presented them to the veterans. That was very nice. And I just want to thank Commander Maybe and the Harris Smith Post 524 for inviting me to speak. It was, it was a great honor. And it's never bad to think about, you know, what that holiday actually means. This afternoon, I had a chance to meet with our new engineer, with our old engineer. We met a couple of weeks ago and I literally handed her a heap of things that Tivoli needs to get to. She came back two weeks later with a list, which is much better to look at than a heap, sort of digestible. I'm sorry Karen Cleveland isn't here tonight because one of the things on that list is to get the crosswalk built in front of this building going over Pine Street. It's on a curve, it's a little fast. We've got a lot of children at the library and the park, so a well-established crosswalk there is something a number of people have asked for. And I expect that we're going to be building that in the spring. We'll be working up the plans this winter, and I hope to get that in there in the springtime. Also, it is now village snow ordinance. So it's always good to remind people that from November 15th through April 1st, you cannot park your car on the streets between the hours of 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
Down by the bridge, you're parking on the sidewalk.
Okay, we'll get to that in a second. So during snow ordinance, we do offer parking permits. And I think we've had a bit of, bit of activity on the parking permits lately. Somehow the word has gotten around, we've had a number register. The parking permit is $25. It lets you park in any of the four municipal lots during the snow ordinance period and not get the $35 no ticket. So I encourage anyone who doesn't have off-street parking available to them to come in and get your parking permit. Also, I want to congratulate the Kotsbon Dance Center, who last Saturday celebrated their 25th year here in the village of Tivoli and in existence at all. I was generously offered an invitation to their gala. It was quite a treat. Saw some fabulous dance, a nice dinner catered. They hired our own Murrys here to do the food. And I had an opportunity, I went there with a bit of an agenda, was to meet some of the Kotsbon folks that I didn't know yet. And I hope to be working more closely with them in the future, trying to find ways that the village and Kotsbon can sort of integrate a little more with each other. I think it's a general feeling that despite their 25 years here, a lot of folks don't really know what goes on over there. And I know from experience from Saturday night, it's really wonderful to know what goes on over there. So that was a treat and I congratulate them on 25 years. And at this time, we'll open it up to public comments on any topic you fancy. I want to hear more about the parking on the sidewalk. Go for it.
Does anybody go?
Mr. Chrissy.
Okay, I'll go with the fire department. Just so that the village board is aware, we started to do some work on the inside of the firehouse. Fixed the outlets, we're changing the bathroom, the men's bathroom, all the sinks and stuff is being changed, there the sinks will be changed, and ladies room. We're doing a lot of the work if we can do it, so we don't have to, you know, come up and pay somebody an astronomical amount of money to do some of the stuff that we can't do. So we're working on that, so you'll see some things coming from women's lumber for different items.
Very good.
Other thing going on, we've had a bunch of calls. Just within the last week, we've had four, four car accidents down at the light there on Broadway and 9G. I've talked to Joel about possibly writing a letter or getting DOT involved again because there's been quite a few accidents since that light has been put up. And people just don't understand how to drive or what it means. Because people that go north and south, stop. People that go east and west, don't. And it's, it's very confusing. Same thing that used to be down by Kelly Road. There was a lot of accidents down there, even though they had a flashing light similar. And eventually, the accidents eased up significantly when they went to red and green, because people just don't know what to do. There were a couple of injuries, there's been some injuries and stuff. The very last one, the lady was fortunate that she got hit on the passenger side and that the truck didn't hit her on the driver's side, because she wouldn't be here today. So just with that being in mind, we're going to try to pursue getting something done where we got to contact two Malinero, maybe a body, we can get something done. That's done. Department, New York State Department of Corrections is going to send a crew down here December 2nd. That's also going to be to, to work inside the firehouse, take under a watch, wax the floors and seal it and all that stuff. So that's all going to be taken care of December 2nd. So when you have your thing on the 12th, to take your shoes off before you come in.
Will you furnish slippers for everybody?
No, absolutely not. Wear your socks. That's why I get 12, I do what my son says. What else have you got going on? The sign, we had to sign up, no turning on a ramp. Getting tired of rearranging the letters, so I took those thing down because we, again, two students, whoever they were, whether they're from Casper or from Bard or wherever, we got them on camera and they steal the letters and they walk off.
How recently was that, happened again?
Last Monday, not this Monday, last Monday. I got them on camera. It's just that, I'm wait, it's, it's hard to get them a clear picture at nighttime because that's the time they do it. And it's lighting thing, so we're going to re-light that sign up so that the light doesn't blur everything out. And hopefully they walk by while we're doing that, so I know who they are. We'll take care, we'll, I guess can't keep calling the state police every time we have an issue. It's just going to be a pain. These kids just don't give up.
Do they take the letters?
Yeah, they steal the letters. Yeah, they take, they, they gotta have them taking the N. I don't know why, but they keep taking the letter N, or they, when you pull them off, they, they break the letters and then you can't reuse them back on the, on the sign. Yeah, I just don't get it. It's just, and it's always, I ain't picking on, it's always two girls, always. Every one of them, we caught so far, it's been girls. So, but that being done, so what was the other thing? The other thing is we're going out, you know about the grant that we got this year for $130,000?
For turnout gear.
The turnout gear, that's all been, guys have all been measured, sized and everything. So that gear should be here within 30, 30 to 45 days. We should have all new, all the firemen should all be equipped with their new gear. And that was made possible through the AFG grant, which is Assistance to Firefighter Grant, which the federal government FEMA pays.
Do you need support with the match?
Yeah, we had, we had a match, $7,000. So they gave us $125,000 and the fire company, through their fundraisers and stuff, matched the other, the other $7,000. With that being said, our next project is going to be New George Life. That is extremely expensive, could be up in the $50,000, $60,000 range, depending on what we get. And that's because the system we have now is 1998. It's a medium, it's a medium duty system. And during our training sessions, we've had two failures so far. So it's time that we can't rely, you know, you don't want to rely on something that's going to keep breaking. Because they say the metals that they use in cars today, the cutters can't cut them or they're, they're too hard for the cutters, so they wind up snapping or breaking or whatever. So that being said, we're going to be going out for a new set of George. Hopefully we get it through the, through the grant. So we'll be applying sometime this month for them. So with that being said and done, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Chrissy.
Thanks.
There was a last-minute change to go with town at Red Hook, so. Mr. Monte.
I have a quick question. What's the status of the bridge repair?
Well, I can't say we've heard much since the presentation we were given last, was that March or April?
February, March.
Yeah. So since they told us it was summer of 2017, I, you know.
I can say that I actually attended, I have to think about that, early October, a transportation workshop held down in Hyde Park. And they laid out multiple projects and asked for the representatives there to help identify the priorities. The bridge repair was actually on that list. And that was the Duchess, yeah, I don't have it in front of me, Pete, so my mind's going to blank out. I apologize.
I was just curious, we just.
Yep, I understand. I thought it was very interesting. It's a, it's the initiative by Duchess Transportation and it handles all of the projects throughout the entire county. What was interesting is that we actually forwarded the information from that workshop on to our engineers in an effort to kind of join efforts, if you will. There's some grant opportunities there, some other alternate funding opportunities that we may be able to fund some of those projects through the transportation as opposed to...
Other than the bridge.
It could include the bridge. That's what I'm saying. There was definitely some opportunities for moving some of those projects forward. Of course, there's nothing set in stone, but I did identify that as the representative from Tivoli, as a project that needed some priority. I think that there's a possibility of coordinating that with some other projects that are coming up. So it may indeed happen sooner than 2017, probably.
And now that our county legislator and county executive are finished with their campaigns and elections.
Yes.
Maybe you should give them each a call.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Make them work now.
Or technically.
Yeah. Other public comment?
That little park down by the bridge, that's on hold or done?
It's on hold, so, yeah, the county executive had canceled that meeting in November, I think. Early November, it was scheduled for. Thank you, Council. And last I saw him, he said they'll schedule, reschedule it over this winter sometime. Obviously, they're not going to do anything with the park till the spring. So I will be sure to tell residents when that presentation is coming. Because I want lots of people there.
Yeah. I just want a second. I witnessed, I don't know how many near misses at that intersection, let alone accidents. Which one was a, which one was a beautiful 65 Mustang GT? That was a hard break, just seeing that car wreck. Let alone the person that was hurt. We need a traffic light there. And, you know, you all know it. We all drive through it every day, so.
Do you think it's just confusion and we had to...
There's a lot going on there.
You come up to, you know, you come up to that intersection, coming out of town, you look to the left, you got light poles, car for sale, houses, just, just, just too much.
There's also, they always put signs.
Signs for sale, any, any, anything.
There you can't see.
I think also the blinking red and yellow is a pretty rare traffic control device and people just aren't familiar with it and they don't know how to do with it. You're supposed to know what it means.
There's supposed to be stop signs, but they don't.
Well, that's, I mean, the question I always had, I was actually somewhat opposed to the flashing light originally because my feeling was that the people who are idiots are going to be idiots whether there's a flashing light or not.
You know, it was interesting.
I'm curious to know, like, actually.
Sometimes you have to do things in private.
Yes. I mean, has it gotten worse? Was it worse than without?
I don't think it's really gotten better.
Is there a way to accurately judge that, though? I mean, you're going with how many years of no traffic signal at all to what, a slightly over...
I'm sure they can compare crash data from the year that we've had the blinking yellow versus nothing versus...
I mean, this is totally anecdotal, but I had a, I remember having a conversation, a very brief conversation with the state trooper at the scene of an accident at Bard, where they have the light there coming out from the triangle at Andale. And he said that it hadn't actually changed. And the circumstances are different there, but what always happens is people are coming out from the school, they go zipping out, they're going south on 9G, so they just go to make the right on red.
Right on red, yes.
Anyway, and then they get, then they get broadsided as they're...
Yeah, there are still some, but I think the accidents at Kelly Road are much less.
Oh, yeah. I think they've calmed down quite a bit.
Well, they've also got that camera on the light at Kelly Road, the, the red light does the blink thing, which says that they're taking pictures. Have anybody gone through the red?
I have no problem penning a letter to the DOT and saying, could you please check this out since the new light's been in?
It's been, one of the, one of the things is that when they did their research back when, they, they did the accident thing, they only go by a certain, certain year and that's it. And same when we had this meeting with, with 9G where all the fatalities happened and everything else, they weren't even part of the equation as far as the, the accidents that went on and the people that got killed. It was from a certain day of 2008 to 2000, whatever it was, 11 or 12 or whatever. They didn't take into consideration any of them deaths. And unfortunately, the way, that's the way they do it. They go by motor vehicles records and stuff like that and that's it. So any accidents we've had in the past year ain't even going to show up there. They won't show up there for a couple of years. But, but the thing is, is that we go to them. You know, we know there's, there's numerous accidents there. And, and, you know, and there are accidents we don't even get called for.
It's unbelievable to Tivoli, there have been 14 deaths in that quarter.
14? Wow. What was that? I think, what was that?
So there's been 14 deaths in that...
Yeah, that section of the road is about that many. Yeah. I mean, that's... I mean, that's... The way you need, it's confusing when you pull up and you got a northbound or a southbound car stopping, telling you to go ahead. It's like, are you kidding me or what?
Right. So, we will get in touch with the DOT and ask them to take a look at that. Are there any other public comments at this time? Tom, you want to think of something? There you go.
Red Hook Disaster Preparedness Board is having a meeting on the E911 addressing. They're going to try to push for... The town is going to try to do a law. There is a law on the books already, but they're just going to go and enforce that law. We're supposed to meet on the 24th about it and stuff, about addressing your property, how it's supposed to be properly addressed according to Duchess County's law.
It's the blue signs that the white...
Well, whatever they decide, whatever they say you got to put. Think they're looking at possibly following Rhinebeck's law. Rhinebeck put a law in effect saying that if you don't mark your thing the way it is, blah, 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 guy comes out, verifies it, and you get fined. And it's like a $50 fine. That's Rhinebeck's law. I think Red Hook is going to try to mimic that one, so just so that the villagers of Tivoli is aware, we are also part of Red Hook. So, it's getting tough for us to find these people. I mean, you get a row of mailboxes and the numbers, it is big at 2:00 in the morning, it's a little tough to find where people live. It's supposed to be a four-inch letter or a four-inch number, and it should be reflective and stuff, and there'll be a whole bunch of things. They're going to try to put in the papers and stuff like that. So, just so that you know, on the 24th, we're going to have a meeting in Red Hook. I'm sure you got the email. So, just so that you know what's going on with that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anything from the board? Well, with that, we wish everyone a happy holiday next week, Happy Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, travel safely. Is there a motion to adjourn? The motion was made by the deputy mayor and seconded by Trustee Ezra. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is 7:56, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.